So hello, everyone. This is an overview question answer study session for human geography. So does anybody have any questions? Or I will just go ahead and do a huge big overview. With my slideshow that I have that just is a a complete overview. And we'll see how much we can get through. If you have questions, please just put them in the comments. I'm gonna work here on getting my slideshow up. So devolution, so I can go ahead and start with that. So this is in the political geography. Unit and devolution is a process by which political power. Devolves, which is it goes down from the central power to a more localized or smaller unit of the state. An example would be in a lot of places in the world, there are what are called semi-autonomous regions like China has one, like Hong Kong and Tibet and Xinjiang province. These places are semi-autonomous. Or a place like Spain that has similar like Catalonia or the Basque Country. So often there are pushes by more local groups, sometimes ethnic minorities within a state to have more power. Nope, I'm answering the question here, Rashika. So devolution is the process by which power moves down. So if the central government gives up power and it becomes like if Scotland were fighting, there's been a question whether Scotland would break away from the UK and be independent. And let's say the UK would be worried that Scotland was going to gain independence and vote for it. They might go through a devolutionary process by which power is granted to Scotland. Partial power so they can keep in the state. So just a process by which power is kind of relinquished by the central government and goes partially to a local region or people. Okay, so seeing some questions pop up, which is great. And let me go ahead and get my slides. Share us with the world. Like us, share us, tweet us, spread the word about Fivable so we can keep growing and get more content up there for you. I'm gonna quickly go through the exam format and then I'll take your questions. If you have none, I'll run through the course in roughly that order. So, oh, and let me, I'm sorry, let me let me do this because you don't need to see my big face. It makes sense that you guys see this better. So that's why the primary question, primary city question Joel that you asked is in this unit six. That's not on the exam. So those five units, those first five, and I've seen a question that I focus on agriculture, politics and agriculture. So if I'll kind of answer Abigail's question about migration and then I will jump to politics and agriculture and then we'll go from there. And again, any questions, anytime, just throw them in there. The format is going to be just simply two free response questions. As you see, one of them is going to have one stimulus to answer, the other will have to respond to, the other will have to stimulate these maps, charts, photographs, pictures. Yeah, with data information for you to respond to. My main tip, and I know that's going to be the F R Q tips and tricks, is to make sure you are answering the question. Always, 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 they say A P stands for addressed problem. So if it's asking you about a stimulus, make sure you are addressing what it is asking, not what you wish it were asking or who it was asking, focus on the question. Easy for people to let go of. Okay, so I'm gonna just jump then. Let me jump to politics. Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna cover the unit four and unit five. Oh, and then Abigail, I will be sure if I don't, please remind me, I'll come back and answer about Rabinstein's Laws of Migration, I have a slide on that. But now that I'm here, we'll just run through unit four. So the most basic unit by which geographic space is divided when we talk about political geography is the unit of the state. This is a little confusing, I think, for Americans since we talked about states like Arizona Texas, New Jersey, and so on. We call these states because initially when we broke away as the United States, united was a small U, S was a big S. We were really thirteen separate states that broke away, united together. Each really as a sovereign entity. So a state is a sovereign entity. It's a territory with population that governs itself, that is its sovereign. That's why California, we are we are not a state in the sense of political geography because we have sovereignty. The United States has sovereignty. And I'm gonna come back to that, that California thing. So currently, there's, you know, roughly, I'll say there's about 200 states in the world. The United Nations, as you see here, has 193. I think it's interesting to note that if we go back to the filming of the United Nations, there were, I forget the exact number, but there were about 50 states in the world. And the rest were virtually all colonies of a handful of those 50 states. So the number of states in the world has kept growing. South Sudan is the newest member of the United Nation. And then you've got the Holy See or the Vatican and Palestinian territories. These are non-member states, which Palestinian territories, we could argue about sovereignty there. Whether it's truly a state, but I'm not saying it's to be controversial, but if political sovereignty is is something they don't necessarily have when they have Israeli military patrolling their territory. So I'm sorry, I went backwards. The main way states can be talked about politically is you either have a unitary state in which all the political power is held in one place. You see, those are the countries on this map in blue, many countries in the world are unitary. Or you have what's called a federal state, which is like what the United States has where power is shared between the central government, what we call the federal government in Washington DC. And then at the state level, and you are hugely, hugely witnessing federalism right now amidst the coronavirus. Pandemic response with states kind of going their own way and battles between the federal government and the state governments. Michigan is kind of the, what we see maybe the strongest. And yeah, so that's kind of the basic two types of political ways. There's also what can be called a confederation. Switzerland's a confederation. We had a confederacy, the United States initially, when we began before we had the constitution. We were under what were called the Articles Confederation because we were 13 separate states that were united with a shared government, but really most power was held by each individual state. That's called a confederacy, not really a common thing in the world. But again, Switzerland is the most famous confederacy right now. In fact, their technical name is Confederation Hebrica, which is why you see them abbreviated C H. I spent the last four years living in Switzerland, so I tell you more about that. But then you have the idea of the nation and the nation-state. So a state is a territory, like I've talked about, what we often just, in the US, often we call a country. A nation refers to a group of people. Unfortunately, I don't have a slide on that. I'm gonna actually go back. This is the end of my culture presentation, but I'm gonna just use this map as an example. So this would be the Balkans. Rashika, you asked about Balkanization. This is where it comes from. This is part of the Balkan Peninsula, just north of Greece, across the water from Italy. What is shown there is the former country of Yugoslavia. And it was made up of a variety of Slavic peoples. The name Yugoslavia meant land of the Southern Slavs when it's created to unite all these people into a country, into a state. What we would call a multinational state. Because the people that made up the state of Yugoslavia were the bigger were Serbs, as you see on the chart, but you also had Croats and Slovenes and Bosnians and Montenegrins and Albanians and Kosovars. All these different nations of people. And a nation is a group of people that feels united by a common identity. There's been controversy recently. California's Governor Gavin Newsom has begun to talk about California as a nation-state. So this idea has kind of been brought in to the American consciousness a little more. And some people would so Sarah, I would say to your question, there's not really a difference between a multinational and a multi-ethnic state. It's more or less the same thing. It's just maybe a bit precision of language. When somebody talks about maybe you could have, I guess, there is a difference, sort of. A nation is a group that feels a strong sense of shared identity. Some ethnic groups feel that, some don't. So we can take the United States, which complicates all these categories because we're a country of immigrants. So we are absolutely a multi-ethnic state. That's what I was gonna say, Sarah, I think you could say the United States is multi-ethnic. But in theory, maybe to some degree, you know, if you're a Polish-American or a Greek-American or Chinese-American, you're an American. So you might be, we are multi-ethnic, we're made up of people of lots of ethnicities. But really those people have a shared national identity, which is American. That's kind of the easy answer. Now, in other countries, there are places, because they're not necessarily made up of immigrants. Yugoslavia, I'll go back to this map, it's a perfect example. When this was one country, it didn't look like this. As Louis migrated into that northwest blue area and Serbians migrated into that eastern area. Maybe at some long ago point, there were waves of migrations. But it really was that the borders were drawn, and I'm gonna talk about subsequent and antecedent borders here in a moment. The borders were drawn around lots of distinct groups that have distinct identities. So that became a multinational state because these groups had had individual identities. People didn't necessarily feel Yugoslavian, they felt Croatian. Didn't necessarily feel Yugoslavian, they felt Serb, Oman, Montenegrin. And this broke up when a Serb nationalist named Smudon Milusovic came to power and it split up into a series of wars. And now it's a bunch of, in a sense, nation-states. Slovenia, that the blue one is to the north, there are people there. This is a place that's really not very multi-ethnic, like the people there are Slovene. But in general, and you can see on this map, there's they call some of these things nation-states, but like, look at China, they call China a national state. I don't know, I think that's a bit of a diss to the ethnic minorities. But China is, you know, over 90% upon Chinese one ethnic group, but there are numerous minorities. So I don't know, this is a little strange map and then mentioning important minorities. I don't know what makes a minority important, but you know, a place like Mongolia really is largely Mongolians. But you have Russians and you have Chinese. And the deal is because borders are often artificial, they cannot perfectly match where distinct groups of people live. So it's very hard to create a true nation-state where the state's borders go around really a distinct group without there being minorities inside the borders or some of the people from that state maybe spilling out into other borders. And this ideal of the nation-state grew up in the 19th century amid the rise of this idea of national identity, which was really a European ideal as the borders of Europe were changing. And there was a series of the Napoleonic Wars and that caused nationalism to rise. And people began to really identify with the state that they lived in. This is where you had the rise of things like flags and national anthems and national heroes and true national identity. So that now there is talk of a lot of places in the world being nation-states. So you could kind of use two definitions of nation-state. One would be a state where the borders really do correspond to that distinct group of people. The other was is where the group of people that live in the state really feel their strong sense of identity with that state itself. In that kind of sense, you could have, which you asked, Sarah, like a multi-ethnic state that technically is a nation-state. If all those people within a various ethnicities feel a really strong connection and identification with that state, you could, in a sense, call it a nation-state. So I hope that makes sense, but these are kind of the main terms of states, nations, nation-state. And yeah, I'm glad you brought up multinational state. We also talked a lot about multinational empires in history and a lot of borders that have been redrawn or because multinational empires split up because of a rise of national identity among the ethnic minorities or the national minorities that wanted their own nation-states. The other thing we could talk about are stateless nations. The Kurds are often talked about as the largest one in the world. Though they have some semi-sovereign territories of their own now, but this is a group I want to say about 40 people, I might be wrong on that, but you know, they've traditionally been, not traditionally, because these are fairly new nations. But they've historically lived in the land that is now Turkey, Iraq, Iran, Syria, and they're just sort of split up. And that region, which is sometimes known as Kurdistan, but they didn't get a nation-state out of the borders. They broke up the Ottoman Empire, which was a very multinational empire coming out of World War One. But we know from Roman, the Romans talked about there are the Kurds being a distinct group that lived there. So they are a nation, but they don't have their own states. We call it a stateless nation. Couple random terms, don't know that these would come up on the exam, but when we talk about boundaries and borders, you have what are called exclaves and enclaves. An exclave is like for the United States, it would be Alaska. It's like a part of our territory that is not contiguous with us. So some countries are split up like this. Like when Pakistan originally was created, when India split, what's now Pakistan was West Pakistan and what's now Bangladesh was East Pakistan. So in a sense, that East Pakistan was kind of seen as an exclave since the capital was in the West. Russia has this tiny one called Kaliningrad, you might have noticed on the map, hey, what's this little thing over here by Latvia and Lithuania that is labeled as Russia or like I said, Alaska. So a piece of land that's outside that country's borders. An enclave is a territory that belongs to another state, but it's inside your country. There are tons of these in the world. If you go to Wikipedia, there's just a crazy list of enclaves. The vast, vast, pretty much all you will never have heard of. And I can think of like one specific one from when I lived in Switzerland. There's a place called Campiono di Italia, which is a piece of Italy that's in Switzerland. And I used, we have lived in there and it's technically, you're an Italian citizen, even though you're inside Switzerland, just a few miles from Italy. So and you can see here, like that would be C in the top picture is an enclave of A, but it's an exclave of country B and you see that from the colors. Now, in the case of C in the second picture, that's not an enclave because it's not entirely inside either A or D, but it still is an exclave of B. So kind of random, but we never know what they might throw at you. I think more important are the ideas of borders. Antecedent versus subsequent, before versus after, in a sense. Like here's that picture I was referring to before, again. Antecedent borders were drawn really before you had dense settlement. So often, whereas subsequent are drawn after, there's already a cultural landscape. So like the borders of Yugoslavia that connected all these people together. There was, that was a subsequent border because there was already a cultural landscape in which it was more Slovenian heritage and ethnicity and national identity and culture over in this area, Croatian here, Bosnian here, Albanian here, and Montenegrin here. And that cultural landscape existed and you could see where people lived and where they were impacting the culture. Then a border was drawn despite all it didn't necessarily fly. So subsequent borders can be consequent, which can say, oh, we're gonna consider the consequences here. And we are going to draw those borders. Now, in a sense, you could say the Yugoslavian border when it was drawn was consequent because it was called land of the Southern Slavs, Yugoslavia. And it was differentiating them from the Hungarians and the Austrians who are Magyar and Germanic, not Slavic, for example. Or you could say these were superimposed, but you really didn't pay any attention to the fact that and in this case, I think it's sort of both, but it was superimposed and that it wasn't the people of that region that chose those borders, those borders were, came on from the outside. So we've seen this a lot in the Middle East. And again, you see this largely when we've seen multinational empires split up or when during decolonization. Often you see the term artificial borders used like in Africa, where colonial borders just became the national borders. And those colonial borders really didn't reflect any understanding of the cultural landscape that was in Africa, which is why you have hundreds of languages spoken in places like Nigeria and why there's been a lot of struggles between ethnic groups and such in post-colonial Africa. So hopefully you might speak to okay, just if it's not. So nations, some nations feel a very strong sense of identity and some nations feel a weaker sense of national identity. And there are forces in the world that can pull a nation together that feel really strongly united. And we call those centripetal forces. This is maybe a little weird, but the way I can remember this is centripetal has the word petal in it. Like petal of a flower and a flower is usually a nice thing we take. So centripetal would be something nice, whereas centrifugal forces. I see fuel and I see feud, like a fight. So that's something that creates disunity. These are obviously scientific ones, so if you know what is centripetal and centrifugal forces in science, it makes perfect sense to you. But and I've put nationalism here on both lists because a strong sense of national identity can pull a country together. Seen this rise of nationalism right now in a lot of countries. And in some ways, that's pulling countries together. And you know, an idea like Make America Great or war can be a really strong thing to pull a country together. Having a strong sense of a national goal or a national motto, a myth, an icon, national heroes. All these things can be used to pull people together. Central institutions like schools can often instill like, that's why we have civics classes, why we pledge the reading the flag and these types of rituals that take place in schools often do kind of indoctrinate people and create a strong sense of a shared nationhood. And a strong infrastructure can allow like a strong national economy. So those are examples of centrifugal forces that can pull people together. Centrifugal forces can really pull a country apart and nationalism can also be a centrifugal force. If, for example, you either have persecution of minorities, that could certainly cause disunity in a country. Or sometimes there are ethnic minorities that are pulling for their own autonomy or their own more control or rights, like we see the Catalonians in Spain. Could be, so that would be an example of kind of how nationalism could pull a country apart. And geographic fragmentation, if there's not a strong infrastructure, not strong transportation. I use the example of Pakistan when it was split between east and west. And that Bangladesh split away because of a civil war and they felt like they were not acknowledged culturally, the language was different than the national language. They felt ethnically different than the people of the West, even though they shared Islam, which is why they were combined in the country. And they felt like they were neglected. So that was hard for Pakistan to kind of stay united as a country because they were geographically fragmented. That was kind of my overview of political geography. So if there's any, and I see I have some questions, so I'm gonna pop into these questions, sorry. So buffer state and a buffer zone. So if there's conflict between two states, let's take North and South Korea and you have what is called the DMZ, the Dirty Military Zone, that would be called a buffer zone. And that's created to kind of help keep the peace between two countries that were enemies. A buffer state is a state that's positioned, again, this would be more like in creation of borders. In a sense, like when Poland was created, maybe somewhat, it's been a country, it's been a state at different times in history, but it was maybe created to keep the peace between Germany and Russia and create a buffer state that would make it less likely for conflict to erupt between those two. So if a state exists between two states, it might be created as a state in a way that helps keep the peace between them. So it does the same thing. It's just a state of its own that has its own sovereign government. But its position kind of helps keep the peace between the two neighbors that it's between. I'm gonna skip the prime city because it's just, it's simply not on the exam, Joseph. That's, that's heartland in the rimland theory. Yeah, so I see, so these are these geopolitical theories. I was gonna throw them in there, I think they're not terribly important. If somebody remembers the guy, I'm blanking on the guy, the name of the person that came up with the heartland theory. So you can throw it in the comments if anyone knows, I forget his name. But this was the idea that whoever controlled the heartland of Eurasia as being kind of the main landmass of Earth, whoever controlled the center and the heartland would control the world that was kind of this intense kind of geopolitics of how to be the strongest force in the world. The rimland theory came in as a response to actually in coastal, not more important. And somebody just, yeah, Harold, Harold Macander, yeah, I think it's Harold, but don't thank you, Michaela, came up with the heartland theory, it was Macander, and the rimland was more it was important to actually be in control. It's sort of like a game of Risk, if you think of that. It's all about which territory makes you the most powerful in terms of position. So I see, I think I answered multi-ethnic versus multinational. Okay, so and Michaela, you asked, are the Kurds, is the Kurds an autonomous region or a stateless nation? So let me just be specific with my language here. So the Kurds are a group of people. So the Kurds are a nation. Right now, I believe the northern part of Iraq, my modern, my current Iraqi, current geopolitical intelligence is limited. But as things have developed in Iraq, my understanding is that the region of the north is largely controlled by the Kurds, though it is still a part of Iraq. So if they were given their own state and had its own borders, it was not part of Iraq, then it would simply be a state and in this case, it would be a nation-state. Because it would be made up of Kurds that felt a strong sense of identity toward that state they lived in, Kurdistan, they would call it. As it is, they have, I believe, it's a semi-autonomous region, which means they have some autonomy, but not complete sovereignty or autonomy. The Tibetans are another, Tibet, shouldn't say the Tibetans because they don't control much of Tibet, but Tibet is a semi-autonomous region. Hong Kong is a semi-autonomous region. Xinjiang province, where the Uighurs live in Northwest China is an autonomous region. Trying to think of others, you know, again, it's a bit of a stretch, but in a sense, you could call states in the United States semi-autonomous regions, but we really don't because we think more like we're a federal system. They share power with the federal government. But in a sense, we are somewhat semi-autonomous. California can do things that Arizona can't, you'd be able to control. So the Kurds are in a sense a stateless nation, though they're less stateless than they have ever been since they have now a semi-autonomous region. So Michaela, I hope that answered your question. And okay. Do I get all these questions? Yes, I did, okay. Yes, I did. Okay. So I'm gonna go into agriculture then, unless there are no questions for me. You can throw them in the comments, or you can keep doing it as a question. So I'm gonna go into agriculture. This map shows the agricultural herds and their spread, where these are the places where agriculture originated. It gets important to say that it was one place, you know, yes, the first question, the center of this map is an important one, but you know, China was its own agricultural herd, Papua New Guinea in Southeast Asia, the Andes Mountains, Latin America, there are different places where different groups of crops arose and cultivation methods and spread out from there. So that's one thing to point out. What I realized, I don't think I, I don't think I have a slide on it. So I'll just say, note about it. This is kind of what we would call the First Agricultural Revolution, when agriculture spread out and developed, and people went from hunting and gathering to farming as a way of life, to cultivation of plants and domestication of animals. The Second Agricultural Revolution took place amidst the Industrial Revolution. Somewhat before, during the Industrial Revolution, some people would say the Second Agricultural Revolution wasn't necessary prerequisite to free people from the land to be able to move into cities. But this was lots of new crops from the Colombian exchange coming from the Americas going global. So new crops available to people that they could grow in new places, as well as natural fertilizers. So there was huge amounts of bird crap, guano they mined in South America, islands off Chile and being brought back and fertilizing the lands naturally in Europe that had been very depleted. New technology, like the sea drill is very important. And so all these new technologies and methods that allow a huge increase in food production, which allowed a huge increase in population and pushed people away from farms, because you didn't need as many people to farm. And allow the Industrial Revolution, and then the Industrial Revolution kind of kept it going with new inventions. The Third Agricultural Revolution is what we call the Green Revolution, has happened since World War II, and this is more what we talk about GMOs and much more modern ways of agriculture that we think of today. So I see Nellie asking, how do, what economic forces impact agricultural practices? It's just like a huge general question. So I'm gonna go through this. And maybe you can ask more statistically, or see if it gets answered in the course of this. So there are two basic forms of agriculture that exist, subsistence and commercial agriculture. So in a sense, Nellie, this maybe will personally answer your question. Subsistence agriculture is people that farm for themselves, like these canyons here on the left of your screen. If it's a really especially great harvest year, maybe they have a little extra they take to market, but the bottom line is subsistence farmers are producing food for their subsistence to eat. Commercial agriculture is where people are producing food very, very specifically to sell. This is like an Iowa cornfield. Now, you could be a family farmer, you know, and commercial agriculture doesn't always have to be at this scale, but often, and most of it is in terms of land, in terms of money, things like that, in terms of food produced. I will point out, it's not just less developed countries, and Nellie, this is also even more into your question. It's not only less developed countries are subsistence and more developed countries are commercial, because you also, in less developed places, have a lot of commercial agriculture for export, cash crop exports, coffee, sugar, bananas, this is, this is a banana plantation in Costa Rica on the left there, these are banana workers, so we in the West and more developed places are completely reliant on commercial agriculture around the world for things like chocolate, coffee, and tea that we just are accustomed to being a part of our diet every day. So like examples of specific economic forces? Yeah, I can, I can touch on that, and Nellie, I can, I can touch on that right now, just so. Nellie's asking about economic forces that impact agricultural practices, and she said an example of specific economic forces such as government subsidies that encourage pesticides. So right now, what I would say is, in the United States, since the seventies, there's been a huge, or we're seeing it right now with Donald Trump. The rise of the trade war with China, which have tariffs here, tariffs there, for those that don't know what a trade war is, if one country puts tariffs on the goods of another, which are taxes on the goods that are being imported. So we taxed Chinese steel because Donald Trump wanted to boost up the domestic United States' steel production. I won't get into whether it was a good or bad thing, it's not an economic class. And China responded by putting tariffs, taxes on imported agricultural goods from the United States, which had a huge impact on Midwestern farmers, because frankly, if you're Chinese, you might say, you know what, we're gonna buy soybeans from Brazil now, because they're, without that tax, they're, it's cheaper buying from Brazil. So then what the government did is it has thrown a lot of money into farmers' pockets to keep them afloat. So it'd be one example of like a government subsidy. Another is just encouraging the production of corn by subsidizing it. Some example, Nellie, would be like guaranteeing the minimum price to corn farmers, so that the fluctuations of the market don't affect farmers so much with their granted subsidies, that's the kind of allowance from the government that guarantees a minimum price. So this has guaranteed a lot of corn production, which has changed our diets dramatically, the food we eat, corn and everything, also for fuel production and ethanol. So those are some examples of like government subsidies that can have international impacts too, because then what happened along with the North American Free Trade Agreement, NAFTA passed under Bill Clinton, it's been replaced by Donald Trump's. I forget what that new treaty is called that he replaced NAFTA with. But one thing this did, in reducing the border restrictions of trade between Mexico and the US, is US corn, because it could be sold for cheaper, because the government was paying farmers to grow it, in a sense, that cheap corn flooded into the Mexican market. A lot of Mexican farmers couldn't make it anymore, some of them headed north to the border, often to work in Machu Picchu. You guys didn't, industrial, industrialization and economic development are not an exam, but that did lead into, you know, a rise in immigration in the US. So those are some examples of some economic forces that could be impacted, how agriculture can kind of tie in, so. And you know, the other thing right now is the battle over water, we see this hugely in California. So government decisions about who has access to water can definitely impact who farms, what farms, if it's viable to farm, with huge water concessions, simply a lot of farms just couldn't exist in California right now. So, Nellie, I hope that, that was helpful. So let me keep going here. Another type of agriculture is shipping cultivation, also called swimming, or can be known as slash and burn agriculture. Common in the tropics, where land is actually not very great for farming in rainforests, but yet what a lot has happened traditionally is people were clear forest, by cutting down the big stuff, that's the slash, then setting a controlled fire, that's the burn, burning all the brush, and then the ash is kind of just tilled back in the soil, and now you have what was forest, now it's a place you can cultivate. The problem with this is that land, rainforest, the soil isn't really great, the rain leaches, the nutrients out of the soil, it doesn't stay fertile very long. So soon, you gotta go and move on and do it to more forest. You could make the argument that this was a sustainable practice for thousands of years, this is not a new thing, and farmers were doing this in tropical regions. And in a sense, it was fine, it worked before the population just exploded as a result of, you could say, the second and third green revolution, agricultural revolutions, but particularly the Third Agricultural Revolution, that just created a huge rise in the population. Also, you can think of the demographic transition, but just all those things that have caused population to explode in places like Africa and India have made this not sustainable as you maybe could argue it was at one point. Of course, agriculture happens in different ways, in different parts of the world. Most of the earth's surface is not cold, is not arable, is not able to be farmed, when you look at deserts in the mountains and the desert forests and stuff, so you can see that, you know, it's quite limited really where it's marketable, and then of course, you add climate to that. So, and then we have a lot of uncertainty of this, because we know the future has a lot of vulnerability. And there's, as you can see in this map, likely to be huge, huge, huge changes in agricultural productivity. And you see, and some scientists would say that certain parts of the world will actually be able to increase their agricultural yields as the climate changes. This is all very theoretical, of course, we just don't know, but but you see a lot of the places that are already food insecure, like Africa and India, according to this projection, you know, are going to see, as a result of climate change, declines in agricultural productivity. So it's definitely a worry is what the future of agriculture is. Nellie's asking about the Green Revolution. Great. So the Green Revolution is often associated with a man named Norman Borlaug, he's kind of the poster child of the Green Revolution. He got the Nobel Peace Prize in nineteen seventy for, he was awarded for saving a lot of lives that would have died from starvation, but even in his Nobel speech, has a great line where he says that the the positive effects of the Green Revolution may be ephemeral, like fleeting, go away but quickly, if we don't check the rapid human population growth. So one of the consequences of the Green Revolution has been a population explosion. What we've seen is where there's more food, population has just kept going up with the food supply. Another so positive effect, it created more food for more people. Negative effect, it's created more mouths to feed. More people having a bigger impact on the resources of the planet. Green revolution technologies in agriculture require a lot of chemical input. So it's kind of meant to move from natural fertilizers more into chemical fertilizers, it's also associated with genetically modified organisms. A lot of people are concerned, I would be one of those people, that we are eliminating the genetic diversity of the plants we eat. So if we are turning to this one amazing strain of soybean, because the yield per acre is higher than all other soybeans, because it's been genetically created in such a way to withstand, you know, temperature fluctuations, or well, what happens when the temperature fluctuations are outside of the you know, outside the realm of what that particular bean was engineered to withstand, and we eliminated other varieties in the process that maybe could have dealt with extreme heat spells or extreme flooding. So there's a lot of concerns that by going with single varieties of things, particularly genetically modified ones, we're taking away the genetic diversity of the food to be eaten, which could, again, with all the climate change and the impacts of the environment on agriculture, could really end up screwing us in the end, because we won't have the same genetic diversity. Other criticisms of the Green Revolution are that it left Africa behind by focusing on race and corn, was it race and corn? That was definitely race and corn in the beginning, but that the crops that were focused on in the Green Revolution early on were not crops that generally were grown in Africa, so this left a lot of Africans behind. This is one criticism of the Green Revolution. Another is that it favors corporations, and an example of this is that you need to have a lot of money to participate in green revolution agriculture, because it requires a lot of fertilizers and a lot of chemical inputs and pesticides. So it leaves poor farmers behind and enriches corporations, and then that those chemicals also are in the environment. So sort of all the pros of organic agriculture are the flip side is the negatives of green revolution agriculture. So I hope that, and that's kind of an overview, I would say, if you want, it's an AP World History DBQ from, I believe, twenty eleven, but if you just Google AP World History DBQ Green Revolution, there was a DBQ that asked about positive and negative impacts. So if you read through these documents, particularly the ones at the end, there's a very compelling one by Vandan Shiva from the Ecologist Magazine, there's one by a Guatemalan peasant organization of indigenous peasants saying this is our cultural heritage and it's being ripped away from us, because we, you know, we can't grow our traditional food. So you could say that the Green Revolution has also taken away traditional cultures, both how people farmed and what they farmed. It's changed water politics, because green revolution farming is very water intensive, things like that. So that's kind of the Green Revolution, and that's shown again, I think if you look at that DBQ, you can read some really compelling documents. It won't take you too long, and you'll have a better understanding of the Green Revolution. So I hope that, that was good, Nellie. More, I'm here, another thing we worry about with modern agriculture is water, and I see this hugely in the American West and in California, where we've largely, you know, turned what was Arab, semi-Arab land into, you know, some of the best farming in the world, but we're also in a historic drought, and that drought is likely to continue or get worse in the future. So you see a lot of the world, and you can see it over in Central Asia, or in the Middle East there, to the north. The biggest kind of example of this that was often pointed to is the Aral Sea, which all the rivers that fed into the Aral Sea, this is an inland sea, where these rivers were diverted for cotton cultivation and agriculture by the Soviet Union, and the Aral Sea has just completely dried up, became very salinated, that much of the salt content went up, so really dramatic pictures of that, you can see maps over time, that should be shrinking water as this inland sea just really largely disappeared, you see boats grounded and things like that. So a lot of fear that the world is, many places are being desertified and suffering desertification, so this is one of the concerns with careless water use that comes out of green revolution agriculture now. Again, one, and then just a quick kind of overview of what's happened with agriculture. I think over time, we could say from urgently with the Green Revolution through some of this, the Second Agricultural Revolution, but much of it, the Third, is this move from, you know, people farming with their hands toward more mechanization. And, you know, I talked about like banana and coffee plantations. One of the things that's happening around, you know, the West affluent parts of the world is people are losing access to the best lands. They're either becoming plantation workers, or having to sell their land, or they're turning themselves, they were to cash crop. So these people are traditionally, you know, worked on small plots, or are turning to large corporate owned holdings. So this is not just in the West, this is worldwide, becoming more mechanized, moving away from zero fertilizers toward natural fertilizers, compost, guano, chicken poop, animal poop, human poop toward more chemical fertilizers, away from natural seed production, seed banks, growing one seeds toward GMOs and hybrid seeds. Farm farming for your family, to farming toward more commercial, toward other people, taking control of water resources, much more, much, much more use of control of water. And again, this huge shift from low yield to high yield, so that is arguably the good thing, is we are able to produce a lot more food through all these things. So now we see some negatives in what we're doing, and yet, the result is we could absolutely feed the whole planet easily with all the food we're producing. It's a distribution issue, getting it to people, and then the question is, is this sustainable environmentally? To keep farming this way. I think this is incredibly unlikely, that you know, we can actually, I think it's yeah, it's quite unlikely that this would show up, but these are known as cadastral systems, different ways land has been divided. On the far left there, you see the township and range system, which is used in a lot of art country, which was split up into just a basic grid of single square miles, one by one mile, each one having six hundred and forty acres, split into thirty-six. Each one having six hundred and forty acres, split into thirty six, uh, and then you had a township of thirty six of these squares which were administrative districts, and this is why you see that a lot of the Midwest, uh, looks like uh, that picture below of Kansas. I think that's Kansas. Uh, in the middle, you have what are called long lots. And this is where lots are divided to really get access to transportation. Either river or roads, you can see that like each of, each farmer that have each one of these long lots would have uh, the same kind of access to the river for transport. And uh, to get to the mill to some degree, or if there's some kind of road that would connect to that mill. And then um, on the right, actually, that map, you can see those coordinates and baselines, that shows the the township and range, but the very, very top of that which that smaller part that says peaks and bounds. That was traditionally, like in the beginning of our country in New England, how a lot of land was divided by, oh, you know, my land begins by the big oak tree and goes down to pretty, you can really using natural features to to demarcate usually irregular pieces of land. Uh, important to say that this long, the long lot in the middle, that you know, is really about access to rivers, roads, canals. Uh, common in French places, so we see this in our country mostly in places with French influence, like Louisiana. Um, and I still will get to Abigail to Rabinstein's Laws of Migration in the last minute, so let me just do Montagnan's model, and now I'll go into Rabinstein's Laws of Migration. So I put two examples of this, because it's it's changed slightly. Uh, so the one on the right is maybe a little more modern than the one on the left, because things have changed. But von Thunen was a was a a German economist who was trying to understand why different types of agriculture appeared where they did. And it was all about the the cost of land and transportation. So that in this case, the center, that red circle, uh, we're talking about the the one on the left here is is the market or the city, what everything is being produced for. The immediate ring around that was uh, what we call market gardening, uh, right here, they call horticulture or dairy, things that uh, were being done very intensively. Uh, things like growing tomatoes or strawberries that might, this is remember before refrigeration. So kind of things that are highly perishable, and also things that really are high value per weight. Um. If you're growing strawberries really far from the market, I mean, you wouldn't be able to get them to market in a decent, in a decent state of affairs, and you would buy them. Um, and so it wouldn't make sense. So these tend to happen close to the market, also where land is more expensive. Uh, outside that ring, um, was a forest ring in Bonton's traditional model, because people were quite relied on that for fuel. And then you got into more uh, extensive crops that needed a lot more space and where land was less expensive, like the grains, and as you got way further out, uh, then you got um, into to livestock and grazing where again you needed lots and lots of land. And you could even bring your animals to market and then slaughter them so they could be their own transportation. So that's not to do with the ability to transport your produce in into town. So I'm gonna um. I mean, I have a slide, I think it was Abigail that asked about Rabinstein's Laws of Migration, so I have to jump back. I just find where that is, so bear with me, I'm gonna just fly through for this. So this is called the grabbing model, also known as Rabinstein's Laws of Migration. Um. Also really quickly about migration, we talk about, uh, almost they just really quickly push and pull factors. What are things that cause people to come to a place? Those are pull factors, like great opportunities, or you already know people there, you have family there. Uh, good wages, uh, free uh, freedom from persecution. Those are the types of things that would pull somebody to a place. Um, push factors are people, things that would cause people to flee a place, like an environmental catastrophe, a war. Um, religious persecution or cultural or political persecution. Um, so, and Rabinstein came up with this model to describe what he was seeing. Which, I'll I'll go in order of the five. One is that every migration flow does generate a counter migration, that some people, so you know what, it was better back there, I'm going home. Um, and every migration has counter migration observed. He also said that the vast majority of migrants aren't moving short distances. We have to remember migration is hard, so a huge amount of migration is not immigration or immigration. It's internal migration, domestic migration, where people are moving from country to town, or from a town to a bigger town, or from country to state, and that's a huge amount migration we've seen in recent centuries has has simply been from country to city. Um, when people move great distances, kind of obvious for the third, but it's pretty rare that people migrate into the country. Most long distance migration tends to be big city destinations. Uh, that also explains why urban residents tend to be less migratory than inhabitants of rural areas. Um, and that in families are less likely to make international moves than than young adults, uh, that's mostly whistle migrating, that um, Rabinstein was, so not a perfect model that matches everything that's gone on. Um, it continues to go on, we've seen some things change this, but um, it is true still that, you know, it is easier for single men to migrate from families and people send money, and this is, this is still um, a phenomenon, but of course, local conditions and recent developments uh, have thrown his model a little bit into this race, so it's not a perfect model, but that, that is um Rabinstein's model. So I'm gonna cut off, it's ten, unless there's a last question. I'll just kind of give a minute if anybody has a last question, I. Let me just make sure I answer all of them. Sorry, I learned the primary city questions, because they're simply not amazing. You can just Google it, but I don't want to take the time. But in a nutshell, primary city is the biggest and most important city in the country that doesn't have another city that's even half that size, so like Paris or New York or Cairo, Egypt. Um, I think to answer all these questions, so why are many countries highly dependent upon a single export commodity? Um, Nellie's asking that. So, Nellie, a lot of that is just specific economic conditions, and some of that is kind of post-colonial politics and the world market. And that a lot of the more developed countries have created a sense of economic dependence on less developed countries. So that, you know, when a place like the Democratic Republic of Congo, which had just huge copper reserves um, was, you know, granted its independence. Um, some of it is incentive that come from things like the International Monetary Fund and the World Bank that encourage countries to develop a structure around this single commodity that the more developed countries, where we talked about corn periphery, if you could, that's something that came to your classes. Um, that, you know, the core countries require certain things from the periphery. And often, economic conditions are created that can encourage the development of those single commodities for the the needs of the core markets, so whether it's, you know, an agricultural commodity like coffee or bananas, uh, or, you know, a mineral resource. I would say that's really a matter of kind of politics, uh, and economics and, you know, power being wielded in such a way that that creates kind of economic dependence on that single commodity in a way that serves the core countries and and does serve elites in those periphery countries, but uh, is also very vulnerable, because if the if the market changes. Uh, or, you know, right now, all of a sudden, I don't know, no one's having Starbucks and the coffee prices go down, or we see oil prices plummeting. You were a single uh, export commodity economy, then you're gonna have hell to pay. So I hope that, I hope that's a good answer, Nellie. And I wish you guys amazing luck on the exam next week and um. Good luck for your health and everything. Everybody stay safe and healthy and have a good day.